Well, there was a croaker having that problem which is he stopped thirty-one and said he's listening. So, from an emergency. About hundred twenty-five.
So, this sort of this situation, and they just mentioned some background, so we talked about. Also, these different things, I heard a few guys appreciate what I got back from you. Um, and one is me as well, the Vegas company, good feedback for that thing you guys might have. Uh, but, uh, heard back from a few of you to try to work recommendations in there as best I could. And so, we're kind of all the same format, and just kind of talk about some suggestions and comments that we've got on all these three things. These kind of the vision statement, the bottom, the survey, survey stuff. Uh, plan bottom, what we have, the original, we talked about last time, that was that place over Prosper Preserve Protect. Um, heard from, I think, Adam, uh, kind of switched it around, preserve protect prosper. But, uh, remember you've mentioned safeguards, staying succeed, I think that's great too. Uh, and so, if anybody else has anything, I don't know, we don't have a bug or anything, but is there, is there direction that you guys wanna? Or you want to make out of some, um, uh? Uh, so that, that beginning thing, what?
I don't have one.
Actually, y'all want to do one, no, we don't have that one. Uh, draft vision statement, so here's the old one. Um, I tried to, have we got a few comments, folks, just some ideas on this, uh, ways to kind of clarify. Especially related to the income of accommodating, that's the part of the crop for accommodating growth. So, what other was the Southern County will retain its rural character and heritage while accommodating growth and development of the highest equitable standard. System of maintaining exceptional quality of life or the county's business, financial stability. So, based on the feedback that we got, uh, John had some, uh, he had to quote, I think he, maybe the biblical quote, yeah, I don't know what book he said his name by. But, uh, preserving an inheritance, one thing to talk about, which I thought was really great. Uh, so, what got appearance is Southern County will retain its rural character and heritage. Preserving an inheritance for future generations would kind of expand on that, that rural character and heritage. Um, while never had, never had some, some concern for accommodating, that's kind of the, that's not the right word, I think that, I think that's a great point. Uh, but shaping, be shaping, uh, crafting, hardware, we're almost at all those lines. Uh, so while shaping and like add, add a responsible, what is their responsible growth, I think that's great too. And maybe we just don't say development at all, growth is development, it's all the same things, we kind of recompensate there. So, everything else is the same, Southern County will retain its rural character and heritage. Preserving inheritance for future generations while shaping responsible growth of the highest equitable standard. System of maintaining exceptional quality of life or the county's business. So, thank you. Y'all, so thank, is that too much for a?
Yeah.
That's true.
The other one in Austin was. Was responsible for it, but either, that I'm not that responsible for, you can't, I'm sure.
Well.
Sorry, I'm just.
When you forget everything, trying to change, lost the world. I think that we need to have a choice. Anything we cannot, we cannot, we cannot, we have a soul that's still preserved, accountable question of my words. Preserving my issues, uh, it's important, uh, that we do a layup shot. I say that because current plan, uh, we open channel with the current plan, we next to areas of the school. First question, but yeah, we just have to use first question, rural program, first question. Are they being, or being, or property. That's the permanent of the decision. I look at the same, I mean. They have heard people. I go to, I got, I got so much on that. Hey, 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 you, you sort of couple some of that, so hopefully, that's a good relationship. A special one. I, we're kind of, I don't know. So, what I'm saying, who fuck me up, I don't know. What we do, so, from our, we, there is, it's all projects that. You know, it's sometimes weird, it's also. Higher than that. Should, how, sort of, see, if, so, we can span the locations, so, this is wrong, we're down.
So, what we, what if we said, uh, sounds good, I'll give it. Southern County will retain its rural character.
Boy, I put it again, uh, I think it's a little, I was, I was supposed to become five hours responsible. But, uh, you're talking about responsible, responsible, uh, so. First one. I'm not saying this, I don't know. Or responsible, right?
So, Southern County will retain its rural character and will preserve its history as an inheritance for future generations. While shaping responsible growth of the highest equitable standard, so, I like, well, I like that. First, the first part is talking about existing principles, right? People who live here, they're in for the people who live here, and what, what brought us here. The second clause there, while shaping or, or responsible growth of the highest equitable standard, talking about the new people, the modern people, but the new problem is kind of coming here. So, it's like existing and the future, you know, I like that.
You know, one of the things that I've become actually just started when I had that practice meeting with, with Jimmy Jones over in Chicago. And realizing how out of balance are town theater colonies, how ethically are them residential? How we're losing our agriculture? And how we're extending fifty thousand people outside the town, how we're horribly tied on industrial. And so, what, so I think he was somehow balancing the, the unique and fragile, um, I don't even know how to say it. But, you understand what I'm saying?
Even on the group side of things.
Well, just the balance of humanity, agriculture, industrial, commercial is kind of what Southern County needs to be all about. Right now, we're, we're better than you. Most of it is, uh, we're, we're sending our people outside the county because we don't have jobs. And, you know, that, Josh, you and I talked about this nonsense, but to, to somehow bring that into, that, that fragile balance. And I, I don't know if those four items are really the only ones to talk about, but, you know, but, you know, we're, we're losing our agriculture, that's. We're way ahead of, I mean, we, we prepare some jobs available, and so, uh, and of course, you don't like the vision statement for me. You pay it all, you want, you want to have it short and concise.
That's a, they're, they're, uh, wrote the, uh, shaping responsible growth of the highest equitable standard. In order to find economic opportunity for all, system of maintaining an exceptional quality of life. Or making the same, or provide economic opportunity for all, for all of them.
Yeah, sure.
Also, allowing, so shaping, but allowing.
That's, that's shaping is.
That's important, that's important, right?
Shaping is a good word, yeah, because that's really what it means. Required, requiring responsible growth of the highest equitable standard.
But, I, that's, that's, the shaping, to me, is like, what is this, my business, your company, is that, is you guys, not just checking boxes, right? You're, you're trying to be the best you can get out of very well, you know, so they bring you a proposal A, and you work with the F, and you show them another, and so to make you better, to improve, you know? And so, to me, that's what shaping is, actively working with the F, and trying to make, elevate it better. That's not, that's, I guess, what I'm, I'm trying to. Okay. Okay, so we come back, I guess. This is, no, this is good, it's important though, it's like, this is, it's like, what are you trying to accomplish? What, what do you want this plan to do, you know? Any good at all, like, where, what happened, they look down on, on that.
What I thought about this is that this is the way our government was supposed to be designed. These types of ideas rouse the round, and the best will come out of it.
Well, I was trying to do this with the, the, the history, so, the future, that inheritance for future generations. Uh.
There, well, this is, this is, you know, we, we, we. Kind of thinking, it's like, any of this, any of this.
Uh, then, got my hand out here, so, I didn't, I didn't put this all here, so let's just kind of walk through, you know? Uh, we still have the prosper preserve deck up there, that makes whatever, um, something, something changes that I paid for the last one. I forgot to, I forgot the whole one, sorry, I'll try that, remember what we changed. And where, where you deal stuff, I think, this is.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Where you do, say, the same, uh, where do you work, when you live up to, down here, obviously, um, you have an idea, and, uh, if you live in Southern County, how long have you lived here? That's, 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 so, and, and we could hear at turn, and we go, we're working with the outside of Southern County. Um, you know, we're probably, I don't know, I, I work here, up here all day, every day, like, so we had something to that to, I live in Southern County. So, see that, I love the mind, why you, that it was more of a question than you live in Southern County, I'm sorry, you work in Southern County, live in Southern County. Sure, yes, you're right, man.
And I wonder what I can, I don't know. Written out responses that were, I'd ask, why? Why, why, make it fair?
Yeah, but you, yes, I think that. Uh, that's my.
I think it's, it's.
It's, I think, right, we gotta do this one, uh, zero eight thing, James, that's something, I think, uh. They don't, they don't, they don't. And they all go to their. That's, that's. That we changed then.
I remember a question for, although, I don't know if that one would suit.
Which, although, it's, uh, do you feel like Southern County is in the right direction, or like, you're really in film? For that one, it's too, it's too, like, and then to show, if people say, yeah, that's great, or people say, oh, it's bad, what does that mean? What are they trying to say? It's, I, I just kind of feel like, it felt like a, a hand to me, that was a very difficult, you know, misinterpreted, it's a, it's just, it's too, I agree.
I was concerned when I read it, but.
Right.
Some division up here.
Well, it's not actually the county, that's actually down, they control over that, so, I think some books that don't know what that, I guess, like, misinterpret that.
I'll see, probably have them.
Uh, obviously, the, the, most of the issue, that's Southern County. That's, I, I, we add another one, let's see, they, um, this one occurred to me, uh, since we, obviously, we last met, all of a sudden, they started saying, add flood, they get something bad on air. Flooding is something we can, we hear about a lot. Um, um, it's just, we do it for water, and the floodway, and the trash, and so, and so, it's something that we've been in. Sometimes, you know, we, we just work it directly all the time, and make it feel like it's, it's on everybody here, I'd be interested, I wouldn't, what percentage of the people having that, let, letting it is up there. Um, so we add, uh, because there's also the one, when we get the conflict, or we're actually doing policy, there's, that's like, we'll talk to you guys about, about some policy changes. We, we add, we're playing, we're, we're, we're coming to, word is, we're doing this, we're just kind of thinking all the, a lower term, but like. Make a policy that you can do, make it so that the state doesn't let it off, we don't let it off there. Uh, so, we add, we add the, and then we add another question here, because it is, did you, you know, that was, you know, we have, like, one of the, one of the, the six things there. Uh, issue places under counting, traffic congestion, rural preservation, like the thing I have, I have, I have, flooded cities against financial stability, sustainability, and, and, you know, laughing, helicopter, you know? Bill, we're trying to do the six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, was to think that, I don't, traffic congestion, safety, and say, hey, you're big, what can we do? And, and so, like, in number six, you know, that will perhaps we best, the rest, traffic congestion, say, so, the reason is, you know, we know probably what it is. It is especially how, just play it, know it, position, kind of hear what people think about it, which is, you know, it's a federal, that kind of, or, like, there's a, there's a limit of how much board they can actually pay for this. One of the things that we talked about, a lot of impact, but, right, when we're talking about, for, uh, impact rates, perhaps, for, for soup, and, and space already, lots of that kind of thing. Um, impact rates for, for roads, it's a level one, that's, that's out there. So, we used to have, we should, we should have on that, the, the, you're still on, until I, in the county commission, open impact rates for roads. Uh, with a hundred dollars per lot, across the county. Builders paying into that for a couple years, and then, some, some, political association, soon, they got them, they, 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 they don't have, they don't have. And so, like, that's something that, that's one of those things that make, that, y'all, we charge it more money, we need to have, you know, the, to, to keep that information, but is it necessarily actionable? Right now, no, it's still good to help, it's good to help, basically, some of the people think we ought to have impact fees, or have developers pay more for traffic, or, or. And so, each one of these things that are in there, if you look at, for some extent, if I'm being honest, it's, it's, it's self-indulgent, but at least I appreciate it, it's for, and for them. And so, when we talk about, you know, will help, you know, the rest, traffic possession, safety, uh, these are, because I said that, or this process, increasing local funding for transportation projects. Unless on the way to the county, that they, they really wasn't, they're not established, so, a, a transportation group, directly on, they said, here's all the projects we want fixed, soon, you know? When the roads are presented, and all that, they have to, they have to, they have to, that money, so, they, you go ahead, for other. Uh, I think we're kind of going off the rails on that, but six, same, same, seven, one year being the best helping county, just more preservation, or, 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 character. Uh, we have, they do that there, I put C, because they had, had it worked, but it's designated parts of the county, rural preservation, preserve, preserves. I don't think you perfectly know that there, and so, what I, I changed it to, uh, designated parts of the county, all of them, pretty much, you know? And so, the parts we kind of, I'm thinking about, when I talk about rural preservation, or, or, that kind of thing, or the areas of the county, that are still primarily rural, where there are, where there's surface, like, where it's high pressure, ultra-high pressure, for change. How you, as, you know, get it's already around those areas, if, if, if there is a desire to, of rural, they've really got the spiritual policy to make that happen. When you kind of services available, water available, electric available, everything else available, roads are available. The pressure, everyone knows that, is intense, for, for those areas to develop, and so, what I'm thinking about here is like, the rural preservation, reserves, and I just want you to look at, y'all know what quarters I'm talking about? You know, like, where the, where the shack lines with that area, those, you know, the people, where services are available, but there's a strong desire amongst people who live there, to make, to maintain some kind of rural. So, I think you really got to have some policy, and say, I wouldn't throw that on that, a little bit better, clarify, what we're talking about, because I don't think anybody does, like, that whole rural preservation, preserve, but, uh. Have, have a area that you're going to say, hey, this is kind of a, this is, in case it develops, but it's not, you know, your own service department. Well, I can say all of that. I already, you know, and so, with, with this bill, it's, it's, we're moving, I'll make you take off of it. We use, I remember the principle, that's in part transportation, Southern County, City of Calhoun, Calhoun, London, and, and, well, some county. But I say, every jurisdiction that, that, that's called, New World, and from, I've already dealt with it, I'm, 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 I'm. Agreement of principle, that we're going to, we're going to adopt it, is, is there a, consider, or what anybody's saying, but he got convinced to enforce the bare rules of the county, for the county, for the, for the, for the. And with us in the city of Corvo, and have a strong example, city of Calhoun, are the only jurisdictions that actually stepped up, and says that law, and back then, probably went like. We're the only jurisdictions that have stepped up and actually implemented, or, or, regulations, for, I, for I was one of them. And so, I were out there, so, they, they did, they did, they, they, they drive away, there's no drive, basically, along, along, how they were. Uh, so, anybody, if all of a sudden, you got something, you're going to, you're wanting to develop, they have access to drive, all right, but no drive, no, um, no, uh, no, no, connection, any closure, they don't think. Or that's right, no, no, traffic, of course, will then, will have to be, by some. And so, that, that's, that's the better, but there, and that's, that's, that's all we can, okay? But, but, he, he, he got, there's no, there's no rip, to not allow it, it's, it's to restrict the access to the house, so, the, the, or, or, for anybody who wants to.
Is that the top chapter?
It's chapter eleven or something, chapter eleven, section eleven, oh, boy, that was a chapter.
Yeah, and I don't know how many of you know about it, but, uh, some time ago, the county was supposed to be, like, a six or four, once, a, a grant, a million dollar grant for water lines to. And the whole understanding of this, to serve the people who are all over here, and Ron just did, in, in the whole water thing, for a while, he was on the, uh, state estate, but they're providing utility history. And currently, you found out that they've taken the water payment that's going to go up thirty-one heat from sixteen to a twenty. Well, the dollar amount, then, then change from the grant, and so, what he and I decided to do, and any of you. And so what he and I decided to do, and any of you are welcome, because they're open meetings, and there's one this Thursday, two or five, in the hour. Where they're going to discuss the progress of this, I think it's called the Smith Water Programming. And we want to keep an eye on, on it because, for me, the, the primary thing is, well, the reason that's taken away from us was because we wanted to put restrictions on new growth that would be encouraged because of this water system. Well, when that, there were a couple of majors of fish, yeah, when, when Matt Shaw proposed that, the budget came in. And, uh, next thing we know, this, this, Downton has the control of the grant, and it's taken away from the town. However, if they're making all kinds of expansions in order to encourage growth, like upsizing pipes and all that kind of stuff. They're going to run out of money, you know where they're going, right to the county and say, we need money to finish the project. And so we're going to try to keep an eye on it and protest it. Because the intent, the whole reason for this thing was to make sure, especially in the islands like up in, over, and those areas, where they didn't have to water, that those people living out there would have water. Now, it's turned into something different. Portland needed two billion gallons, but, or one million a day, two million in a drought condition, and now they want two million a day, three million as a drought condition. So, you know, they're, they're kind of growing, they're kind of running their own deal here, on the money that has a wind. You know, they sold thirty million dollars, they were kind of getting ten million a few years ago, and then, and then twenty million in this grant, and I was already told by one engineer, it's going to be, it's going to be forty-five to finish the project. So they got thirty, they're going to be forty-five with the old design, and now they're upgrading the design. And so that's what Ron is alluding to, I think, as planning commissioner, we all know what's going on in the county, because we're going to be working on this twenty-foot plan, this is all part and part of it.
It is, it's, it's education, working together towards top priority. Uh, remember, I, I, we had a, a question about what we do against. So, you know, that was second sign, uh, what was second sign? Yeah, and kind of, like questions, of, 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 some of the things about, I don't know. But, uh, really.
Well, especially when you figure we paid over two hundred million dollars for that contract. So, I know that, that I'm political, there were some ideas that there was gonna be a lot more growth in Cotton Town. And, that's just not happened at this point. And with the zoning changes we made, it's going to be less possible than it would have been. And so, plus it's hard to rent and very difficult and stuff. So, you know, the, the thing is, is if, if we are going to sculpt or whatever we're gonna do in this place, the plan, it is going to affect schools. And, and I think the only reason that I am apprehensive about crossing that, that Rubik's Cube is because there's so much, so much, you know, between school and town.
When you get, for example, parcel life, we're seeing all kinds of, and being cleared in some divisions, so things like that. Well, as I go with Eric and Stuart, so when we get more of these applications coming in, we need to be considering that in our decision.
And it's the, the thing what I was trying to grab from there is this body is like, well, we do one year breakers, or one year breakers, and fellows doing that.
Mr. Ray, I'm going to consider it. I don't know if this is required by our attorney, but basically it's a, I'm certainly not sure, but it just shows from the deed what the dimensions of the property are. It's, it's, there's some courses here. This is the end of the light industrial, I'm just trying to read all of this, but basically it's, you know, it's, it's activities located primarily within a building. And provide buffer between other districts and other industrial activities that were objectionable to any of the industry type stuff, which I don't think they may never be classified as necessarily anywhere in the district. This is just something on the website showing everybody's link within the steel fabricator survey. That's something I'll see out now in other places. Light industrials, I can mystery, this, this is highly extended, allowed uses here. There's a lot of water, like your residential uses and that kind of thing, your box out, your industrial activities, heavier industrial activities. This is located within the regional employment center. That's where we're at here. So our plan, we have a book on those sources residing in those knowledge that kind of reflects that was in the city jurisdiction at that time. This is definitely one of the things for the new plan, that would be best recommendations that go by an area of life, resulting in get everything about this area or some of the next computers. That would be a really good, easy thing to put in the new plan as a goal to achieve and check off. It's the new that here and a few other places around the county where you have some similar situations with a lot of that. This is just a Google review of the second property. Probably goes back to this way. Took a few pictures out there of the site. See, it is a, there's a workable property that's, that's supposed to look. Those are what I've done. We have our findings of fact here. It is, it's totally consistent with the 2035 plan. Is there a change in addition that requires this amendment? Yep. I mean, it's not, it's not aligned with what they're doing there. It's addressed the trade community aid, certainly have had this kind of stuff within the community. Lots of other similar uses of the facility, correct, of that mine performing use. So maybe this is totally logical or really developed, kind of left over, same highway there. There's non-residential uses present in there and long standing, there long standing structures that were, and all that. It would, you know, it's not necessarily isolated, the other district is where we're looking at this as a, you know, a floor road right across the street. But this is just something that's a piece of metal, probably designed until we do a bigger, bigger update. There's no adverse effects of this, so we just say nothing. There's no data of their environmental effects or anything like that as a result of this. Nothing new really is proposed as part of this resuming confirmation. This is basically our issue. So the next step is the county commission being asked to make a recommendation with the county commission on this. And the legislative, three readings, the full county commission for both. They sent back their questions. If the county commission approves this and the resuming, it comes back into that time and it removes an ask for them being able to redevelop the site and do other things with it as long as it applies to the LI, light industrials. So this is just something to do to do, make it easier to license property with these properties. If they do want to build anything new, redevelop the site, anything like that, they do have to turn a site plane into the county commission. It's minimal, you can defer about the SAF. It's, you know, construction number 3000, it's worth the, those kinds of things. And so the chairman, there's a deck of motions on the screen to find a better standard for that, and provide a positive recommendation or find a not met, provide a negative recommendation for Mr. Burton. Mr. Ray is the project representative on this and he does tend to be the county commission asking questions. He's the only person that's on the screen.
Mr. Sutton, so we have little papers who are speaking for our answer. Before we bring this screen, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Sutton, I, I do think maybe Josh would be able to answer. Are the LI has a whole list of things we can allow? Would there be any reason that you can see that we would want to open up those uses?
No, not necessarily. I mean, it, it, LI has a couple of kind of objectionable uses. One of them is, you know, developed uses, that kind of thing, but those are prohibited within, I think it's a thousand feet, any residential property. And so if this, this property is boxed out and being able to do that, like, because it's got that new subdivision across the street or other residential on the other side of it. So, no, honestly, I, no, I don't think so. I mean, that's a, I think the city of California, the county classification is any commercial or commercial general, something very similar to our district, or it's our LI. And so, and just to kind of clarify, not long ago, but with the LI's own district, you're allowed to do what you're allowed to do. We can't do additional resuming where we see they can't do certain uses.
Yeah, okay. Is this super simple?
I think it's all safety over the matter. Do they have those over this line, do you have? It's the button across the street. And it's going to form across the street, this is, this is better.
If I'm in a special force like that, I, I don't work well under the, and I don't think people will hire me around. And I don't remember being sent to Egypt. And so I think you have to force like, then I pack it.
Well, the fact that it's in the flood plan, I wonder if, if something would be allowed on that, also the natural water course.
And then it's simply not a floodway itself, but in the hundred year, that red area, yes.
Okay, how, how long has they been, how long has they all broken into operating there?
No problem. I don't have to pay man, no, it's no more. And we have not fifteen, twenty years of charger, auto service that would red me. Oh gosh, like that's forty years.
So this, this, the history of that land, probably nobody remembers when it was a farm.
No. I see, I recently, I went back to this, because I laid out area from any hit or it be any, the natural areas, mountain, mountain, prairie.
Yeah, and then you got the river, of course, straight. I don't know. It's a little unsightly. Do we have any restrictions on? I mean, the last thing I want to do is make a hardship for, for businesses in there for years and years. On the other hand, you don't want, you know, things to. I've grown up in areas that look pretty. Is, is there anything that we want or should do about that?
Not for residential properties, yeah, there's, there's certainly, I don't think that we've done all that, all active work sites like that. We write about that, we give our, our folks that, that all this to predict that. But we, we did, there's personal properties that have their zone incorrect and everything. It's, it's together, we're always over at other uses. The county typically grants a whole lot in anyway. With the work that's going on out there, it's really pursuant to what they're, you know, if they just start letting that old junk cars along the road or something like that, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing in that violation of the fact. It looks like all the stuff that's out there is just, it's things that.
Yeah, well, there was that one picture where there was one red area, anything throughout the town.
Yeah, that is not going to be, you know, if you get your dummy corrected. And they don't, they're really there. And they do something to do with, with that one house, that's an investment property.
Yes, sir. I would like to hold out this, this sort of nation all that, that under the LI is only into all through, that group. And that fact that there's, there are not any land numbers around over here, just in old industry, ten, and the baby that, that everyone very confident. And I think that the evidence behind it was red, like, that that's wrong with it.
Yeah, with, with the, you know, with the IDs and things out there, sometimes industrial buildings have screening and, and things like that, you know, whether it's a bench station or, or just a concrete block wall. So I was, I was just curious about that.
I think if, you know, if they come through and, I think if they come through, bring up sites and whatnot, those would be buildings, yes, I agree with that. So that's, that's enough to be looking at, true for him and, where, where in the cycle they have, we talked about, especially along the road, you know, what they did with the property licensing, nobody cares so much, but on the road, we, we have some factors that would begin with a, a cycle application, some major that come through that, or those things. On this, you, you don't want to discourage them from getting their, so I mean, you know, especially if they're down on their ground.
Okay, well, Mr. Ray, does, does anybody have any questions? Okay, that's the screen. Well, then we have items one, two, and three. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion? And Mr. Stahl. Kathy, why don't you go ahead and call it?
Yes, sir.
Two.
Stahl.
Yes.
All right, that passes down to the county commission, it's free. The chairman makes that one of the, and then it was just a bad shirt, it was, we just said this one thing out there, saw it, it was all good. Oh, ten. And then I have the three.
So CJ Morel is, has this evening to speak to the county commission. I think they're, they're wanting to talk to you guys about clarification regarding the county commission's intent regarding culvert. We'll sweep down on the culvert that's located in, around the road, along, around the road near the Gregor Downs project, which is very little.
Thank you. Good luck, casual, just something they decided, something. Thank you for your time today. As Josh mentioned, we wanted to, I guess, bring some dialogue to you guys. A few months ago, we received approval for the primary plan for Gregor Downs for twenty two months, just out of Brandonville Road, just east of the banking of Brandon. In that approval that we received from you, one of the conditions that, that was shown on the minutes and the approval that we received was that the existing culvert to be replaced or improved slash replaced in order to provide eighteen feet of roadway pavement through the culvert. There was a lot of discussion that night, leading up to the else decision. And so we really want to clarify the intent of the actual commission itself. After making additional visits outside of the section that the county engineer from our side, that a partial, to get the exact measurement of the roadway length and also the measurements on either side of the road at the culvert. I know the commissions asked that we provide eighteen foot of roadway pavement through there. The existing width of the pavement at the culvert is seventeen feet. The, the distance from the edge of pavement to the, to the abutment or the, the concrete culvert that surrounds the, the existing culvert is seventeen. And the existing, the, 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 the distance from the edge of pavement to, I will call it the spot that's closest to the edge of pavement where it, where it drops off and slows down to the existing create is sixty. So we have a total, we have a total width of thirty feet at the culvert, and we need to fit eighteen feet of pavement in, but we already have seventeen foot of pavement. Like I said, there was a lot of back and forth that night. It's our understanding that the, that the main concern was the safety of the roadway and the, the road width of the roadway. I believe Mr. Sutton noted during that meeting and in his presentation that the existing culvert, none of the water that leaves our side travels through that culvert. And so that's why we would let it leak, that the, that the sole intent of, of the condition was to widen the roadway safely. That being said, we, we feel strongly and after meeting with Marshall, we, we feel very much so that we can, we can meet eighteen foot requirement at the culvert without replacing the culvert at all. And so we wanted to have some dialogue and discussion with you to see what the overall intent was of the condition and figure out what it means, I'm sorry.
Well, as you know, I did all that.
Yes, sir.
And in the twenty five years I've lived, it has flooded several times, so that we could not cause it. And with the complications of the project is upstream, a lot of impervious roadway and roof. I know that's not your fault because you didn't build the project, but it still creates a, especially on a dead end road like Brandonville Road, life safety issue with the thirty-two houses that you would be planning. So it would be my thinking that somebody needs to perform engineering, tell some hydrologists to at least see if that, that culvert is even close to capacity for, for the drainage course that it picks up.
And normally, whenever we provide calculations for a culvert like that, it is because it's a direct correlation or it is directly impacted by the subject property. And neither the landing of Brandon or the Gregor Downs, which I'm, I bring up landing of Brandon because this is associated with it, because it's right there at it. But neither Gregor Downs, which is where the condition was, was placed on, or the landing of Brandon, has any water to that culvert. And so it, it would be, in, in other cases, this would very much be, if you found issues with the culvert, it would very much be a county project, where the county would be responsible for checking to see if the culvert has capacity. And so I, I guess that's where we're, we're at a standstill is, we're very much trying to, to make this project work. Obviously, there are other, there are other improvements that have to be made with this project for McGregor Downs, or the turn links on Howard 31 and Brandonville. Actually working with T dot, going back and forth on central drawings and receiving there, I guess, head out of approval before we move forward with, with those plans. But very much felt to us in, in the actual heat, the discussion was more centered around, especially after Mr. Sutton's comments about the, us not passing any water through the culvert, that it was the width of the roadway that was most important. This, at least my opinion, how we let that be. We can get eighteen feet, we could probably get more with, normally on a, on a culvert like that, you see roads narrowing anyways, just because of the, the situation with the culvert, but we can beat the full requirement of the eighteen feet of pavement. And it would be done with six inches of pavement on either side of the road.
Yeah, I understand that, except if, if the road becomes a spillway for a culvert to contain the, the capacity, what, what good is it? You follow me? The, the, the fact that, that on certain, and I, well, the way I left that meeting was that somebody was going to look at the, the hydraulic calculations of the drainage of everything upstream. I mean, I, I understand that, that you are not adding to the water, you're adding to the water that goes down to, to Shea Creek. However, the, I mean, you could make a similar argument about, or it needs to be done on the highway. That, you know, you're not responsible for anything coming down from that page.
Well, we, we've already, we've already acknowledged the fact that we're responsible for pretty many examples.
Well, I, I, I realize that, but, but the, the thing is, is if you're going to build thirty-two homes and you can't access them in, in different times of the year because there's a flood, the question would be, do you have any responsibility to get your ultimate customers in and out of their homes? Or do you just say that there's, you don't have any responsibility as far as, you know, their safety in and out? Or, like I say, it's flooded several times in, in the time I've been there. So the, the way I left it, the, the way I understood it was that we were at least going to do some hydraulic calculations to see if, if that pipe that runs across that road, because it has flooded so many times, if, if that's within engineering specifications. So, I, I mean, that's, does anybody else have any thoughts on, I don't want to do all the talking here. So I'm just wanting to set the voice and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, that becomes county's responsibility, at least that becomes county's essential? Sorry, I mean, I.
Yeah, if, if, whatever developer should probably go in and replace some examples for actually those part of the project, and, you know, when they get it done, it would be inspected, approved by the county engineer. We'd get asked about, we'd, we'd speak, so we'd, we'd think that about, I would have heard about that. Well, I have to bring my folder.
I think your question was, we're just curious if you have a chance to go off camera with that kind of culvert, any question? Do you think it's stable and do you think it can go to the county requirements or come to the county requirements, what's that, so that didn't seem.
The culvert, the, I think what you're saying is, the same thing I'm asking is, is, is that pipe got enough capacity to handle the, the designed water flow for a hundred years or?
Right, I mean, I think I saw that here, this being there for twenty-five years, as you said, it's flooded seven times, so.
Yeah, but I don't know why it flooded, but I, I know it has flooded.
My guess is it's probably not designed to do that, but it's, it's something.
I mean, we have USGS as drainage, and, and I, I would imagine they've updated from the Shiloh project.
That's the creek right there. And our, our, they don't have to be, if you replace it, have to replace it on, it's not ours, especially actually on a hundred years. Would have to compensate on the economy. So that's, that's the creek, or whatever it is, that's from the tree, one in north, this is in the west, south. This is on the side of the road where the, the project's on. And this is just some of the stuff, this, 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 this particular coverage has been discussed for years now, two or three years, with the different incarnations of this project, not this project, but different projects that have come through. And so some of the stuff has been, you know, entered into the record by, just might say here, the county commission, or some of these pictures that some of the neighbors have taken of, of where, where the culvert tops there. And so that, this is from sometime in twenty twenty, I wouldn't have that was September twenty twenty or something. So that, that wasn't in this, like, made in, or anything, so. Marshall and I took a few pictures of the culvert today and this measurements. So that's, that's the culvert right there. That's the, the north side of the culvert. So that, that just, that's that fence, that's there. We did some measurements, but Marshall and I, it's, it's very, twenty sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
So measured in there, so it's sixty-five, so somewhere twenty sixteen and seventeen. That's another view of the, of the road where it crosses the culvert here, comes in, goes south and there. It's a, like a sixty-five inch culvert, I mean, that's every day, sixty-something inches across. I can guarantee one hundred percent that there was no engineering, that was done with that culvert's width. And so, you know, and so, when it's within, I don't know, but I guarantee that. So that, that's just something, like, we did one out today, took a few pictures, and so, if it was, if it's, if it's a bigger place, you know, you'd have to, you know, if there's a question about, you know, it's designed, you know, the numbers should be run to, to cover what needs to be put in there. That's what, that's what I'm here to say.
I would, I would think that'd be a first. Because we didn't know when the project was approved, we didn't have any of this information except that we knew that it had flooded in the past and it was going to require something. I just never assumed, I guess, but I just assumed that calculations would be run on drainage from, from upstream, and that's a pretty sizable area.
Or, or we're lucky to have no flooding to go there.
And, and I understand what Mr. Morel is saying, but the, uh, there's, I mean, it's telling you something to come from, what he said, I'm, I'm thinking.
I mean, you know, in, in, in a good, like, our world, I mean, this is something that, this, that's a project that, that, you know, that I said in a good, like, our world, maybe I saw it a couple of times, but it's, it's a situation where a developer contribution to the county, to fix, I don't think will be inappropriate. Because on the one hand, like, like you, like you said, like CJ said, they're not putting water into that culvert. But on the other hand, as you said, there are residents that are going to live in a, in a way that they gotta drive across that culvert every day, to only where they can and, and when it looks, when it looks like that, they're not gonna live around, period. You know, that's just a fact, we're no longer, we're, you know, must get a boat. And so it's a situation where some kind of a, a, a arrangement where the, the, the size is, it figures out what needs to be there, we forgot how much it could still cost, and we, and then we proposed the share, and that cost for the county. That's not crazy, because it's, 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 it's a, it's a longstanding issue that if this development doesn't happen, they just walk away from it today, that's still a problem. That's still, that's still a problem for, for people to build on, right? So something to kind of get, try to get it done, and everybody wins.
Well, so is there any precedent in the county that you, either you know, that would be a partnership to the county for the fell?
Well, yeah, not, not on something like that, trying to think for some, some straight, some kind of a, just a, right now, a plan. Can't think of a decent example, but on, on resuming, maybe we've had lots of situations in the past where developers have come in, this is your, you know, the developers, well, retreated from the farm project, for instance, developers came in and contributed, went home from home, and they, they, I don't know where they're lying, that, that fell south through thirty or forty blocks. Um, they've paid into a fund for years on that, but that money is sort of accounted to do whatever we want to with this transportation related and assembly of that project. And so that money, that money's in an account, grand annual for the finance department, and there's a few other, other items like that as well. Um, for a part, another one, I'll, 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 I made a, a fifty thousand dollar contribution or something, uh, this is something that used to happen, I, I, you don't agree something on, on these kind of things, not necessarily, but, um, I don't think there's anything considered, can be done, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's a developer's fault, uh, or. But, but then again, by the county says, you know, this is the developer's responsibility, uh, and the developer is, is showing this, so.
So I suppose the first sort of evidence would be to determine if that pipeline is. Yeah. Absolutely. If we want to fix the problem, we need to know what the problem is. It might be the size of culvert, like the other items, so, um, I think it's definitely worthwhile to determine whether or not the culvert is of the proper size or problem is. And then to that point, you know, is, that is the primary problem, I think, a lot of the challenges with this, because it's a longstanding problem, maybe the negotiations, the developers can be had, you know, to do a share, but I think the first objective is if I have a real problem with it, it might be a condition of culvert, and it might be something else that's going to, so, I mean, just increasing the size of the culvert is certainly a whole problem, but I don't know that it's all the problem, because, but I, I. So, this is something that we want, we ask that there's someone here.
I think we can do it, I think they can, they can, or there's the, uh, you can see, I think, I think they've been, they're interested in doing some of that, uh, rich, uh, calculations, uh, I think what, what size structure you have, you know, under the hospital or some kind of.